I mean, we can still start the meeting, which I'm going to call it to order. Because it is a a great agenda that we have. So, I want to jump to our, oh, is right, are you on the phone, Mr. Barnes? I'm sorry, I changed my screen.
I'm just texting.
Just to give a brief update, I know you gave an update last month concerning the signs and where we were. But Betsy, Ms. McCully had asked for just another overview. I know we talk about it, but I can't remember how much we actually bring to the council. So if you could just give us a little brief overview of that, that would be great.
So we looked at getting a proposal from Curly Signs that does the electronic signs for the communities around the area. They just completed one over at Callmore Manor. Their total cost was about $36,000. Dan used, they used just their general fund to update that, their sign. They gave us a proposal for the Sunoco sign, and then they looked at doing the sign there at Town Hall electronically. The one at Sunoco would be approximately $23,000 to do it electronic. And it basically would fit right in between the two pedestals where the sign is today. The good thing about that location is there is, Sarah's signing in, I see, there is power there, so that's not a big deal. The only issue we'd have to go through is to make sure that we get a permit from the county on that. I also looked at what the cost of one of those signs, much like the one that's on Baltimore Avenue that talks about the railroad crossing, closing, where you can, they're on wheels and you can just move them to wherever you want to put a sign and then put a small message up. They're about $16,000 that they can start at, and then you can add on options and costs from that. So what I did was ask our State of Maryland office that's dealing with our recovery funds, if we could use our funds from there for that purpose, to provide a way to inform the public about messages related to health and of course, any other message about the community. So, so we haven't forgotten, Betsy, about it. Where I, I'd kind of put it on hold because of the cost. But if we do find a way to do it with the recovery funds, and that would be super. And then otherwise, we can budget it for next year, or we can go ahead and purchase it if that's what the council would like to do out of our funds that we have on hand. That would be up to, up to you folks.
Well, hopefully the recovery funds will, we can use that. That would be great.
Yeah, that would be super, super.
That's one of the things we're looking at, how to. We'd like to, that's for sure. Any other questions concerning that? Ms. Chester, did you have a question?
Are any of the lights, are any of them able to have like, sort of like the little solar kind of energy source that at least sometimes it's not drawing from the grid, it's producing its own?
Right.
Is that a possibility, or is that?
Not the ones that are, like, we would install at Town Hall or up at Sunoco. But the ones on wheels, yes, they can be solar generated.
But the ones fixed in place can't? That's, I almost would have thought it'd be the opposite.
Well, I said that, but I never asked Mr. Curly if they could do solar somehow. But my thinking is, is that it might be more difficult in a fixed location, but it's certainly an option we can look at. Because the interesting thing about the signs, they're like a car. They come with so many options. This size print, that, that size print, that, you know, this. So it's like, just keep adding on. So I'll go back to him and find out. Yeah, that's a good question, and it would be a great, great thing for a green community to have a green solar community information sign. That would be really cool.
I mean, for sure, you'd want it tied into something so that no matter what, like, it would always work, but.
Yeah, yeah.
The only thing is, can you hear me? Can everybody hear me? Fantastic. The only thing for me would be, as I mentioned to Mr. Barnes, is I think the Sunoco station is fine if it is more raised. And I don't know if that would be a problem, because it is difficult to see where it is now. People generally miss it. But I think that is a very good place to have it, because so many people come up and down. Can it work? But I'm thinking maybe somewhere near the train track. If we could invest in maybe a small one or a portable one, one that's stationary and one that's more mobile, should I say, more mobile. Should we have an emergency on a particular street? And I know we're going from zero to talking about two in a mobile one. But I think we should look at that possibly, because I don't want to leave out, some people only go out to Decatur to Route One. And others, you know, come in and out of town. So that's just something we should.
I think a mobile one along with the stationary one, I think that would be a great thing to have. To be able to move one around.
We'll look at that. It's just more work for Mr. Barnes. Thank you. Thanks for that update, Mr. Barnes. And then I'm going to move on to our discussion about our recovery funds. I know we don't, we're not as aggressive, or we haven't been, we've talked about it. But we need to move forward with it so that Mr. Barnes can have some direction. I know he and I have talked, and we've given some input about it. But let's, let's, I know he sent, if everybody has that, I'm going to try to pull mine up. Here we go. So this is the recovery funds. These are the eligible categories. Everybody sees that, everybody understands that, basically. So one of the things we said we wanted to focus on was flood mitigation. So, yes.
Is that background noise on your end?
It is. It is. I'm sorry. How's that?
Thank you.
Is that great?
Yes.
Yeah. I'm sorry, I was doing dual roles. Okay. So our flood mitigation. And so we talked about grants, everybody was in on that. And Mr. Barnes kind of broke it down so that we can change it up. This is for us to kind of work with. So this is just what we came up with, and I think it kind of speaks to what we all were talking about. And it is a section for the homeowners, a section for the renters as far as flood mitigation. And then we talked about Wi-Fi. And feel free to jump in and give your ideas, give your comment. But as far as the grant process, we'd like to give them, with the grant, we'd like to give them some categories that they have to provide us. We want them to work for this grant, in a sense, not work, but work. So flood insurance is going to be a requirement if applicable. If, if you guys remember, some people talked about the fact that they could not get flood insurance because of where they were in the town. Is that correct? I can't see anybody, so tell me yea or nay.
That's correct, that's correct, Mayor.
I'm trying to make this smaller so I can see people too. Nope, I can't, I won't mess up. And so, go ahead.
So were they saying they couldn't get flood insurance through like, traditional insurer? And so therefore, they would have to go through like, the National Flood Insurance Program? Because I thought that the federal program, like, had to insure you if you paid for it.
So I think part of it is, Ms. Turberville, is lack of knowledge, in which we're going to assist in providing that by bringing someone that works for a couple of insurance companies in. And maybe when we have the hearing, and we'll talk about that too, maybe that can happen then. But lack of knowledge and where you were located, whether you were near Kenneworth Avenue, or whether you're near 46, it changed for some reason. That some people could get flood insurance and some people were not qualified for it. So is that correct, Mr. Barnes?
Yeah, there's not all areas of the town, believe it or not, that you have to have, are eligible for flood insurance. It's only certain portions, primarily next to the levee, 47, or excuse me, 49th Avenue, that area, and particularly right around, some on Decatur. So yes, there, there's parts of the town that you, you can, I guess you could apply for flood insurance and purchase it on outside if you wanted to, maybe if it was available. But what we're talking about here, Councilmember Turberville, is through the National Flood Insurance Program. That's, that's how you would get the flood insurance for, for your property. It is, I think, costly too. That's one of the reasons, that's one of the reasons why people don't get it. Partly also. But maybe if we were doing the grant, that could be part of the eligibility of that grant, the cost of one, the first year of the flood insurance.
I tell you, on my street, I looked into it. We can get flood insurance, but it would run pretty close to eight to $1,000 a year, depending on what deductible you have and stuff like that. So from what the agent I talked to, he said, because he looked into the area, he said, are the, pretty much where others have been told that the town isn't in the flood plain, or, you know, just certain parts. He said that was misleading, that everybody in the town, from what he pulled up, is eligible. The cost is going to be less for me than it would be for the ones that are along Taylor Street, Levy, and down by the old elementary school. He said that's a much higher premium. Anybody says they can't get it, yes, they can. You just got to make your agent do his homework and really look.
I think that's the good thing about us bringing in a few insurance companies, just to get that, that input, that balance. And so we need to look at if, let me see, one of the, one thing we have to look at is someone can sign up for insurance and then they can cancel it. And so that would be, we need to be concerned about that on the homeowner's end as well as the renters end. But I'm going to stick with the homeowners right now. Since that would be so high and additional, and, you know, people are suffering now financially. If we were to require it, we would have to have something for them to sign off on. To say, you know, I acknowledge I should have flood insurance, but I don't. Therefore, if a catastrophe should happen, I don't know what else to say, but something like that. Because I think flood insurance would have helped so many of these individuals. So we want them to do things that are going to help them as well. We'll help you, but you have to do things that would help you on the other end. Am I making sense? Yes, Ms. Turberville?
So can, I guess I'm missing the connection about why we would require people, like, would people absolutely be required to have flood insurance to, to do this?
So this is for all of us. So what we've done is, Mr. Barnes and I put some things down for us to critique and see if it should be a requirement. I honestly feel if, if we are going to provide a grant of, if we say 2,500 to a resident to assist them in obtaining some of these things that would keep their home safe, or not safe, we don't want to use that word, safe, but better prepare them for an emergency. I think that's what we should have them do on that end. And yes, we can help you out, for sure, we want to. But if, if you have nothing, such as flood insurance, and you can have it, I think that, I think that would have helped them in a huge way, according to their deductible, of course. We all know about deductibles. So it's just something for us to, it, it's our, our input, it's us. This is just what we put down, that I feel strongly about.
So I wonder if some of these would, like, if we can find out whether people making any of these improvements to their property would offset, or maybe even reduce their rates. You know, like, if you're like, I have X gauge downspouts and gutters and like, grading. And then they're like, oh, then your insurance is, you know, $90 on average a month, not 120. I don't, I mean, it would be interesting to see, and that would be something to share with people as a motivator.
Yeah. Yeah, so I, I think what Mr. Barnes and I can do is meet with a couple of people on the side before we bring someone in for all of the residents to hear. And that way, we can get those things down pat. That's really good input, because you know that happens with our car insurance. Yep, Ms. Turberville, but that happens with our car insurance. If you have, I don't know, an alarm, or, you know, even homeowner's insurance, you got an alarm in your house, a dog, or whatever, you know, that gets bundled in and may give you a discount. Yes, Ms. Turberville?
So I, I do, I guess for me, I worry that this would actually be like, cost prohibitive for people to be able to participate in this, basically. And Betsy, can you repeat again for me what you said the quote was for you to get flood insurance?
For me, it would be between eight and $1,000. I mean, my, I can pull up, but I had him look at and talk to a couple of other people on this street.
Like eight to, like $1,000 more a year, or?
Yes, because it doesn't go through your homeowner's insurance. It's a separate policy.
It's separate, right.
And they look at the value of your house, the contents of your house, and where you are, because the flood zone, they have the 100-year flood, the 50-year flood, the 200-year flood, which zone you're in. And apparently, he said, and which I do every year, I get a thing from the county saying, you know, you are in the flood zone, you should look into getting, you know, insurance. And so he said, it's going to be, but I kind of look at it this way. If we make, you know, the, you, if we make someone say, you got to get flood insurance, and then we can help you out, what's going to stop them after they get their flood insurance? We help them out, they cancel it, and they get whatever the balance is to come back, you know, to them, and then we can't, there's nothing we can do.
Yeah, I guess for me, I feel like administratively, this would be something that would be difficult for us to monitor, which is sort of what you're alluding to, Betsy. I'm also of the view that, like, I, like, this is a lot of money that we're getting from the government. And that being said, it's still like, everyone who pays taxes around here, it's still all of our money that we're getting to do this, anyway. So I, I don't know if I feel like we really need to put any strings attached to this. Like, doing any of these things that are listed here, you know, guttering, grading, permeable paving, like, that's just going to be a helpful, good thing for the community regardless. And I, I just, I don't want to do this, and then all of a sudden, we've got people who are like, I don't have an extra $1,000 laying around to pay for flood insurance, so I'm not going to do this program. Right? Like, I don't, I don't want us to disincentivize anyone, because I think it's only a benefit for them and for all of us if we do this.
And I, to me, it, it should be open to everybody, not just the ones that were flooded out this past time, because a lot of the people that were flooded out are repeat.
Oh, no, no, this is for the community, period.
Okay.
Yeah, not just for, I mean, this would benefit anybody in the community, because we want all to actually take advantage of these rain check incentives. That's what we're about, in Edmiston, anyway, in Rymon. So go ahead, Ms. Chester.
We're thinking about this as, in a way, almost like capital improvements for
The town.
For the town, or, you know, infrastructure at the individual level. And this isn't about helping people who lost money and, and sort of property back in September last year. Like, it's not, like, this is a forward-focused program.
It's like preparation.
This isn't about trying to help people that lost things in September.
Right.
It's about, hey, this town is low-lying, has some water issues. Let's do whatever we can for everyone to be safer.
And that's something else, I mean, that's good, your question is good, and that's something else we could look at as well for those who lost something. We did provide a lot as a community to those who lost. And so, okay, so that was the flood insurance. And what I was going to say is, can we, Betsy has already done it. Can myself, Ms. Turberville, Ms. Chester, and just see, give them a call, give an insurance company a call, our, our insurance company, and see what we get. See, based on our home value and all of that, what, what's the cost that we get? We don't have to make it a requirement. We can inform our residents, provide them knowledge, and they can make the choice. It's on there, it was for our discussion and our decision. But let's see what we get, just to have an idea, a better idea. How's that?
To sort of echo what Betsy said, it is a really confusing process, because I've looked into it twice now. And, and sometimes I'm in the flood zone, and then I am eligible for the federal program. But sometimes I'm out of the flood zone, and then I have to go 100% sort of private insurance. And so I feel like that's also a bit confusing.
So maybe that's an issue that I need to bring to our county council and delegation. So that Prince George County can have some clear-cut answers concerning that. You know, maybe that is an issue we all need to talk about. I need to bring it up at PG CMA, possibly. So thank you, Ms. Chester. Ms., Ms. McCully?
I'm going to defer to Rod.
Mayor, I was just going to say.
Oh, I missed you, I'm sorry.
That's okay. The county flood maps are updated on a regular basis, and there's an office, particularly a person involved at the county, that when you contact that person, they tell you, yes, no, you're in the flood plain, you're out of the flood plain. And so it might be good to have that person actually do a presentation and talk about our town, because flood maps are reviewed annually and updated. I've got maps, like Councilmember Chester said, I've gotten maps that say certain parts of the town are out. And then I've gotten maps that say that certain parts are in. So it, it's a little bit confusing on that. It's just like with our sidewalk project we're doing. There's a part of it that they say is in the critical area planning next to the levee, but we're not putting the sidewalk there. It's, it's not, not in the critical area planning.
So what do you think about, you know, that, that is excellent, and we do have those maps. What do you think about also having an insurance company here as well? Because we can have them, the county here, but then an insurance company is the one that I would go to. Ms. Chester would go to, others would go to. So we need them to say some good things. That's a good idea.
But the other thing I was going to suggest, if, you know, with this program, say you apply for a $2,500 grant from the town to help improve your flood mitigation on your property. And if all 270 homes in town applied, that's, and was given the grant, that's $682,500 of your recovery funds. I wanted to make sure you knew about that, that amount. But the other thing is, you could make as a requirement, not that they have to buy the insurance, but they have to go through a presentation about the availability of the insurance, and whether their property is eligible or not, and what that cost might be to them, so that they could then make an informed decision about whether they would do it or not do it.
That's, that's exactly what I was saying, provide them the knowledge and information. So that's.
Yeah, maybe we could get somebody from from the National Flood Insurance Program to do it.
Yes.
So that we're not like, selecting a particular insurer. But it's, because I think the National Flood Insurance Program, like, goes through insurances, but you can also get directly insured. But they said that way, I think their, their site is floodsmart.gov, and so maybe we could get, we could do something like that through them. I think, yeah, I, I mean, like, empowering people and giving them information, I'm totally supportive of. And making that a precondition.
Absolutely. I think that's, that's right, that's correct.
And maybe they could tell us whether any of these kind of improvements that we're describing make a difference in calculating someone's rate. It'd be nice to know that.
As well as our insurance.
Blood plane is the overarching, like, things that are out of our control, but yeah.
We don't care about our gutters.
Like, your gutters are cute, but you live where you live.
Very good. We talked about, oh, go ahead.
Mayor, I happen to think, as we were sitting here talking, listening to you all, another thing that we could add to the homeowner's list would be sewer backflow preventers. Because you can add, you can install a sewer backflow preventer in your line that would then help, when you do get a flood, you don't get the sewer back up potentially as a result. And I've forgotten, if you recall, Mr. Cotton gave us.
That's exactly who I was thinking of.
Yeah, gave us a great deal of
Certain homes can get that, you know.
About that, and whether that, I've forgotten what the cost might be, but it, it seems like it's several thousand dollars, maybe, or, or maybe less than that, I'm not sure.
Just have one more comment. I don't know if this is super relevant to this conversation, but there was a text going around, like, on Christmas Eve, maybe, I saw it kind of late, about someone asking for a grant for help with the cost of their, I think it was, I don't know, maybe it was their sewer line heading out.
Or a line.
It, I was thinking.
Was it the sewer?
It was sewer, sewer.
Yeah. But I was thinking that as, as WSSC replaces and does all this work through town on this water main, it's always a little dicey when you start plugging new fixtures up into very old fixtures. And so I'm, I don't know if there's anything that we can sort of, I don't know, like, if WSSC can give us any sort of, you know, tips on like, what to expect? Like, is this, are these improvements going to impact people's old cast iron whatevers, or? I don't know, is everybody's inflow in pretty good shape, if that's what they're working on, is just the water main? I don't know, it just, it struck me that we could be seeing a lot of incidents of people having trouble in that plumbing that runs between their house and the mains as all this work on. In that plumbing that runs between their house and the mains, as all this work on the mains is happening.
I just asked my um home expert about the backflow preventer, and he um mentioned that. Uh, he's not sure if the code changed, but we're supposed to have them, like, on our outside spigots of faucets. And um, I asked him if we had one, he said we did, but ours broke, so um. He believes that we're supposed to. Oh, he said he knows we're supposed to have them. So. But thank you, Ms. Chester, uh, uh, go ahead, Mr. Barnes.
Mayor, the, uh, just to respond to Councilmember Chester's thing about the, the resident, uh, yes, we did have a resident that had a sewer backup. Um, line fail between their home and the main, and was looking for some assistance. And whether we had any uh grant funds or something available to do that, and so.
We just had the one, though.
Correct, just.
Okay, yeah, right, yeah. Yeah, I mean, those things potentially could happen, I think um Betsy had an issue before, I don't know how long ago.
Yeah, ours was the, the main water line coming into the house, ours wasn't too.
Yeah, but we also know that, um, and I think Betsy and um. Rod and I talked about that, we also know that there's insurance. That um WSSC sends you in their bill that says you should get insurance for your water line after it. What, from your home to the sidewalk, is it?
Home to the meter.
The meter.
Home to the meter, yeah, and not everybody takes advantage of that.
And that's not super expensive.
No, like five dollars or something like that, and now the sewer line is different. But um, yeah, a lot of people don't take advantage of that, so I think we have the opportunity to provide um. Uh, some information, some knowledge to our residents, and that's why. And I hear you, Ms. Turberville, but that's why sometimes you have to have a requirement. Other than that, people don't pay attention, they just take advantage of, of whatever funding you might have. And it's not to say that we won't provide them the funding, but I think sometimes those classes or those. Uh, I don't know, Zoom calls or whatever it is. Um, asking them to find information about uh rain check programs with guttering, grading, rain gardens. You know, we give trees away all the time, you know, the urban tree canopy, we do that all the time, so. Um, some of those things would be good for knowledge, having them sit through a flood insurance um. Conversation, you know, those things you can go check, check, and check, right?
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm comfortable with, you know, with giving people, like, requiring people. To get the information, ultimately, though, the decision is theirs, and it wouldn't just, if they decided not to get it, it wouldn't disqualify them.
Right, yeah, yeah.
I did have a couple of questions on what we were thinking about limits, what the maximum limit would be. Maximum limit, is that even the right term? Anyway, with the maximum amount that a um. Person could receive in support of doing any of those items. And then how would we ensure that the money was used for that purpose?
So again, it's up to us to decide the maximum limit. In which Mr. Barnes and I just came up with twenty-five-hundred based on um information from other municipalities. Surrounding municipalities, not necessarily surrounding. Um, and also um some information that we've received from the residents that lost some items. Um, so it's a maximum, it's not the minimum. You know, it's not the set amount, so the maximum of twenty-five-hundred was what we were thinking. Um, and putting it out to you guys to kind of decide, and what was question number two?
How would we verify that the funds were used for the purpose that they're being distributed?
They would provide us the information, like receipts or pictures, it would be up to us. But receipts always make a difference, um, of course, you could know Joe Blow with um, you know, plumbing company. Or whatever, but pictures in your home, because we have to be accountable for this funding. So, um, and if you have another idea, but um. This is what I know to do, always, yes, sir.
One of the things that we do is probably have our code officer, either the full-time or the part-time one, actually do an inspection. And so there'd be a checklist of uh whatever the applicant was applying for and that they were going to do. That we could verify that the work pre-construction and then post-construction, that it was actually done and signed off. Because like the mayor says, we'll be audited, so we have to provide documentation, if we gave out a grant. That, that grant, um, the money was spent for that purpose.
How do we do the other home improvement programs? How do we?
Just what I, just what I, just what I described.
Okay, yeah.
Would there be a way? Would it be useful at all for us to have like a list of potential um service providers? Just because some of this stuff is. Like, you know, you, you, it can vary in, in quality and. Um, what quotes you get, so I just wonder if it might be helpful. Not that we would endorse them, I don't know, I just, I'm just wondering if, like, because if I was going to apply for this. Then I would want to have some, excuse me, I would like to have some direction as to what. You know, where I could go for help.
Yeah, that gets a little dicey, but that's exactly what the county does, they'll, they won't give you a vendor. But they may give you a list of vendor, registered vendors that provide those services, um, and then you can. Uh, pick from them, but they certainly, uh, and, and I would agree, we would not want to make a re- recommendation of a particular one, but. Certainly, we could come up with a list of here's licensed uh with the county and state. Businesses that do these kinds of services, uh, wouldn't you think, Mayor? I, I'm.
Absolutely, unless we were to um send out, not a bid sheet, but. If, unless we were to send out information to some vendors. And ask them if they meet these requirements, are they, are, you know, are they certified in this, 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 and that? And then provide that information to the rest.
Yeah, pre-qualification.
Yeah.
Um, approval list, kind of, yeah.
So are we good on um rain check program, those items, and just asking them to at least. Meet four of the requirement, for the, for of the categories or requirements? At least.
So, twenty-five-hundred dollars, though, is not gonna cover four of those things.
So what are we trying to cover? Are we trying to assist, or are we trying to um fund them? And that's a good question, I'm sorry, that, that's good, I think my question was good, too, is that? Taz?
Taz is here, but uh, she's not, she's just laying here.
Oh, I hear her, man, is that your, your um doggy, Ms. Turberville? Oh, no, it's, it's, it's Ms. Chester's, that's her baby.
I'm on mute, and he's sleeping.
Oh, well, maybe it's here, maybe it's my stomach.
Might be, because Taz is sleeping right next to me.
Do you hear what I hear? I hear growling. Oh, okay. Yeah, what's that? Oh.
Ah, Sarah.
Sarah, yeah.
No, I just turned on my heater. So I don't know what, it wasn't me before.
Did one of you, did the little one say something to you?
Yeah, she said she was cold, so I turned on the heater.
Okay, that's, that was, it's okay. Um, yeah, again, it's, it's up to us, but we, we can't fund, you know, all of. Everything, we just wanna help out, that's what we're doing, we're assisting, so um.
Mayor, can I challenge that?
Of course.
Like.
Of course.
I mean. This is a lot of money.
Time, you usually challenge me.
Like, this is a lot of, like, it's one point two million dollars in total? What is it?
One point five.
One point five?
But keep in mind, twenty-five-hundred dollars to two-hundred-and-seventy homes is six-hundred-and-eighty-two-thousand, half of the money. And then you wanna do wifi, and you wanna do stormwater improvements, and you wanna do.
And talking about renters, too.
Projects, and then, yes, yes, so.
Right, but built into that is, is an assumption that every single homeowner, every single would do it, and I don't think that's the case. Like, I don't think.
Well, we don't know, when you're talking about giving away some funds. Um, if I didn't think about uh my gutter, having a larger gutter, a, a, six inch as opposed to a four inch. And we need to think about that, too, because six inch becomes a commercial grade, but is it recommended? Maybe. So, um, you know, I might wanna jump in, too. You know?
Um, well, I, I guess I'm a.
Won't be all residents, of course.
That all, like, suggesting that a resident would have to undertake four of those different projects just seems. Like, that, that seems like a lot to me, particularly, like, if you're gonna do permeable pavement. Like, that's gonna be like a seven-thousand-dollar job, depending upon how long your driveway is.
So remember, we want them to check it off, Ms. Turberville, though, that they understand the importance of permeable pavement. It's not saying that they have to get it. So they have to, I'm sorry?
Yeah, I, how I, maybe I'm misunderstanding. From what I'm understanding, they have to, will have, for all seven of the, the categories. Will have somebody come in and discuss the pros and cons. But you have to participate in at least four of them, come to four, it's Zoom meetings or four. However, we said, you have to come to four of the seven, and then you can pick the one that you wanna do. You don't have to do four projects, you just have to come and listen to. Four different Zooms or four different stories on each one, is that how?
Well, that's not what we said, but um, that's good, this is for us to decide. This for us to decide, and again, I mean, I know where you stand, Ms. Turberville. But we need our residents to um participate in, in um. Programs that will assist them come the next flood. So we want preparation, and I don't wanna tax anyone, we don't wanna tax anyone. But we want us to be prepared, we're providing knowledge, check, check, check. And then maybe that is a good idea, one program I'm gonna participate in, or two programs I'm gonna participate in.
Because of the rain tax program with Prince George's County, some of those options in those seven listed there don't cost anything.
Yeah, and.
The rain barrel rebate, if you buy a rain barrel and install it, you get the money all back. Um, or, you know, same way with tree canopy, if you add a tree, uh, there's ways that we could provide the tree free. Uh, the one that, I think, uh, Sarah, the one that you honed in on, that would cost the most is the permeable paving. Or if they did a lot of extensive grading, same way with a bio-retention pond. Um, you, those can be built for relatively, any, particularly in a yard, relatively um inexpensive, too.
And our residents probably have one in front of their home.
So, okay, then I guess I need some clarification on how this, so they would ha- have to do. Four of those things, but not pursuant to like the, the grant funding that we're giving them. Like, I, I guess, I, I, so like administratively, this just seems kind of complex to me. And to me, like, what makes the cleanest, easiest sense is to make this not onerous for our residents. Not onerous for us, but to make sure that people are using the money in a way that is actually gonna be flood mitigation. And so in, in my mind, like, if they're gonna put. New gutters on the house, like, they get the twenty-five-dollar, twenty-five-hundred dollars, that might cover putting gutters on their whole house. It might cover half of what the cost ends up being, I don't know, um. And in order to get that money, they have to also do this Zoom on flood insurance. Like, I thought the Zooms were only relative to flood insurance for anyone who wants to do the program. And that that be it, because it's like, also, you also then need to get a rain barrel that could be free if you go through this program. And then you also have to get this, that could be free if you do this, like, that just seems like a lot administratively for our town to be managing. In my mind.
So, um, I think that, uh, I think it's great. If they have to go through the flood Zoom, the um rain barrel. Click that, click on that at Prince George's County and go through that quick, it's really quick little session. I mean, we've already had the rain barrel session, which was a little long, but we've already had that information. Is, I don't find that there is, um, it's taxing. Uh, in order to receive assistance. And um picking one, as I'm hearing from um. Ms., Ms. McCully and Ms. Turberville, that, that could be the winner. But just go through four of the categories to receive information. One of the things I think about is, we have um. During all of our events. Excuse me, we try to provide some type of environmental information to our residents. And I feel that this is a, a ripe opportunity to help it stick. We've gotten greener, we've gotten smarter, and it's an opportunity to become a little bit better environmentally. And receive twenty-five-hundred or whatever we, we um provide as well by picking one item. Um, to help improve my home.
I wonder if, instead of it being like one item, that if you're, if you pay attention and you go through these. You know, these different kind of learning module opportunities. Similar to the way we have these other home improvement programs, like. It's gonna depend on what your house needs, you know, maybe you need gutters, but then. The water, when it gets down to the ground level, you also need grading, because, but then maybe your neighbor doesn't need grading, maybe. It, it just, it feels like people are gonna need different combinations based on what their current. Kind of house, yard setup looks like, and, and so. Some people might only need one, some people might need three or four of these mitigations, um, and I don't know how. Rod, when, when people are getting these, you know, whether it's the energy efficiency grants or the, the home repair. I don't, I don't know how people figure out.
Yeah, for like.
In the world of things that their house might need, and it's on the list, how do they narrow it down to what's gonna get covered?
They need, they need an audit, they need a flood audit, basically.
Right, the two programs that we currently do, uh, weatherization through the um collaborative uh effort. That, that is exactly what happens, Sarah, is um first thing is an energy audit, a company comes in and audits your home. And tells you what's wrong with it in terms of losing um heat and efficiency. And what the um Edmiston Beautiful Program, that also is, works a similar way. We have a checklist of what's eligible in the grant to do on the outside of the home, and so we go to each home, and like you said. Um, Hillary, it, it varies depending on what that home's condition is, so then that determines. The scope of work that can be accomplished with the grant, so. Um, and Mayor, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe. There's a program that the Black Mayors Association did with the Chesapeake Bay Trust. With some communities where they did the same kind of thing, an audit, where they went, they go to the homeowner's property and they look at. What the flood mitigation issues are, and then they give um, oh, an array of um. What could be done to help with that situation.
Yes.
We, I'll say, we could always say up to twenty-five-hundred dollars and then do. We, I'll say, we could always say up to twenty-five hundred dollars and then do. All, everything for twenty-five hundred dollars. Then they get twenty-five hundred dollars. If one item takes twenty-five hundred, then that's the one item.
So.
One more time, I'm sorry.
I said, we could, you say twenty-five hundred dollars, I I say, we say up to twenty-five hundred dollars. If they can get all seven items for twenty-five hundred dollars, they get all seven items. If they can only get one, they get one.
Oh, yeah, that's what we're saying, up to.
Yeah.
Not, not flat. But you said forty-five hundred somewhere.
Um, okay, I'll take forty-five.
No, I thought I heard forty-five, okay.
She was using an example of like, if you, if something costs forty-five hundred dollars, one item costs forty-five hundred dollars, it's on your list.
Twenty-five.
Get the twenty-five hundred.
Okay.
So I wonder if we might, I would propose a friendly amendment to this idea. And that's that we build in to the cost of this to the town. Of having each home that participates in this, get a flood audit. So that they can actually see, like, what would make sense where they live. And then they can make a decision about how they want to use the twenty-five hundred dollars. Uh, and then that way, we would know too that it would be, you know, cuz like.
Who's paying for the flood audit?
Like, so we would add that to the cost of this. And I suspect when I had an energy audit done, it costs four hundred dollars. I think the county paid for three hundred dollars of it. Um, so I wonder if there might be someone that we could get, like, one contract. To do this, so that it's not, so like, this is just a thing that we pay for with the with the recovery funds. For each home that wants to participate in this. We send out the flood auditor to evaluate their home. So then that gives the resident a, you know, the full list of like, here's what would be most helpful, given your particular circumstances.
There's probably, I mean, the Chesapeake Bay Trust has like a whole stormwater audit where they have. All these volunteers that are certified to come out and look at people's hardscaping and yards to figure out. You know, if they can make their stormwater more bay friendly, and that these. These things exist, people that. Think like, there's insurance adjusters can probably do these kind of assessments.
Well, if you recall, after the flood, we had the um Prince George's County Emergency Management Office staff. That came in and did that very, what we're describing. Uh, they looked at each property to determine. Wh- whether, you know, how, why they flooded and 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 what they could have done differently. And I think if they told the mayor one, and I once, they told us multiple times, well, this property owner needs to do this. Or this property owner needs to do that, just so they didn't. Emergency management didn't have to do anything, but um, yeah, there 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 are companies and there's people that can do this.
And then Mayor, I like your idea, like I, I'm not, I'm not opposed to like giving. Our, like, participants in this as much information as possible. Um, I'm just trying to think of ways that we might be able to streamline it a little bit, so. Rather than having them participate in like four different Zooms for the different categories of things, what if it was just a single? Like, hour-long thing that was like, here's how you can, you know, here's the various ways that these things work. Um, and how they can help mitigate flood damage, and here is the benefit of flood insurance.
What about if we posted where they can do it at their own convenience? What if we had one? And um, then we put it online and they can sign in. And then we can see that they went through. Something like that, and just have it there available continuously, you know? Yeah, we're creating.
So they could do it on, right, right, like you said on the run time, yeah.
Yeah, they click and receive a certificate. I've completed four, five classes, yeah, and they can take a quiz at the end, this is.
Eventbrite, we could do it through Eventbrite, they have to sign up that way. No cost, um, they get a um certificate, we get a list of participants.
Yep.
Great idea, thank you. All right, so we've got a lot. Um, given Mr. Barnes a lot to work on and we'll get back to you on that part as far as the homeowners. So the only thing is, and I hope this is okay, for renters. We'd like to require renters to have renters insurance. Renters insurance is not very expensive at all. Um, we found that a lot of the homes that we went to, they did not have renters insurance. Their their renters, they didn't know what the homeowner had. The home homeowner may have had homeowner's insurance. But the renters' items were not covered, so. Knowledge, you know, requirements, you have to have those, that renters' insurance. Can we track it? We sure can, if they make us the additional insured. If they get it just to get to twenty-five hundred or just to get eight hundred. Um, and then they cancel two months down the line, we would get the notification that it's canceled. What we do after that, I don't know, because they already have the money, but um. A good faith thing, I guess, um, for our residents. I know that insurance can be had for as little according to what we're we require. Let's say we require one hundred thousand. I know that they can get insurance as low as nine, eleven, fifteen, twenty-five dollars a month. Um, is it a lot for some families? Maybe, but think about the loss. You know, your refrigerator goes down, you lose, I don't know, your refrigerator freezer, electric goes out, you can claim that on insurance. Uh, water comes in and damages all of your clothes, there's a fire upstairs, you live downstairs, but your your clothes have smoke damage. You can claim that on your insurance. Again, you have to meet that deductible.
So Mayor, would any of the peop- like. Any of these items that we're talking about though, is that anything a renter can really do to the home?
Yeah, what do you mean? If they lose it?
No, I mean, like, like the the programs that we're talking about, right, like permeable. It just seems like, for the most part, they're not. A renter can do.
Yeah, that, that's good. So the renter wouldn't be able to benefit from that, the homeowner would. But we're also covering ourselves and them by the renters' insurance. Um, can the resident, the renter, go online and find out this information? Sure they can. But they can't make the changes, of course, to their home. So that's a good, good point, very good point. But we do still have a lot of homeowners. I can't tell you the number, um, Mr. Barnes probably can.
Oh, we have like uh fifty rental units in town that are homes, not, not the apartments.
Yeah, so. Our homeowners would be covered, and then our renters are covered by the insurance. Um, personal belongings, we saw people throw out beds, you saw it. You know, all the dumpsters we had, Betsy and 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 Ms. Chester, yeah, you guys saw that. So these renters lost. A lot of personal items.
Would it have been covered by renters' insurance though, if it was a flood?
Yeah, you have, uh, you, it's just like your homeowner's insurance.
But it's not covered if it's a flood.
Well, if there is water damage according to how the water came in.
The renters can get flood insurance.
Because it's only gonna cover their things, it's not gonna cover the house or any of that, and that's the big expense for. They're not gonna pay.
But I don't think, but I don't think renters' insurance covers damage to personal items from a flood.
It does, it covers water damage.
Water damage.
Personal items, so they'll get a new couch, a new bed, they won't get a new water heater. They won't get drywall torn out.
With renters, and they have, they have to put that in their, renters' insurance, they have different levels. And you have to put in there that you want, for water, it doesn't say flood, it says for water. So even if a pipe, if a a pipe went in the house. And it damaged their TV and other personal items, they're covered. But they have to add that in on the renters' insurance. It's straight up renters' insurance, no. Insurance with water damage, yes.
But even that's still very inexpensive, but it it's only their thing, so it won't replace the carpet or the pad under the carpet, that's still the owner's responsibility.
Right, okay. Hillary, Betsy, I didn't understand.
I'll just say it anyway, so I have, um, I'm a owner, I'm I'm a property owner. Um, whenever a, one of our pipes break and causes damage to one of my renters. Um, sofa, their beautiful sofa, or even makeup. You know, maybe they have a business and, yeah, messes up your makeup and all of that. They call me and say they want to be reimbursed. I tell them that I am responsible for repairing that pipe. Repairing that drywall, but the personal items, they have to handle, unfortunately. But when they have the insurance, it's a great thing. All right, that was was my example. Another great question. You, this, you and Safeway, get some ice cream, um, okay. All right, so, oops, I lost you guys, so that was easy.
So how much would each renter get? Would they get the coverage for one year of their insurance?
No, the hope is that they would continue. We we would find out if they cancel out. You know, if they cancel out their insurance, then if something were to happen. You know, we've already provided you some monies to assist you. Um, and you canceled, so if something happens. You kinda shouldn't come to us to help you do that. We could help you.
I don't see giving them tw- up to twenty-five hundred dollars. For something that, if we give them twenty-five hundred dollars and they do one year of insurance, but don't continue, or they move out of the town. We know that insurance isn't gonna cost them twenty-five hundred dollars for one year.
We, we, we can decide not to do that, it's up to. And so for a renter, maybe it's, maybe we can put a stipulation in there, we'll pay the first, whatever it is. But again, if they stay in that home. For three years and they drop that insurance after the first eight months, we have notification of that. And please, you know, we have a heart, so we'll help anyone. But please, you were supposed to have insurance to cover you and your family for all that damage. You know?
Yeah, I'd like to cap it for, we will pay one year of homeowner's insurance for them. And that's.
Not a killer.
Yeah, and and after that. You know, they can see the benefits, maybe, if something happens, but they can also see how little it does cost. And they can set aside a few bucks every month, so when it comes back around, you know, then they're responsible for.
Yep.
We would, the key on this, we'd, we'd have to tie this to the requirements of the money that comes, the recovery money, so. Um, it, the renters' insurance would have to be somehow, Mayor, um, connected to the flood. Water and sewer infrastructure, um, public health.
It kinda looks like it would be if we're, you know, along the lines of what we're requiring for the homeowners.
Right.
Right?
Yeah, I'm I'm trying to get my uh head wrapped around that, I I don't, I'm not real sure.
Yeah.
Whether that would be um, requiring renters' insurance. I I know where you, where we're coming from and where we were thinking. But as I've listened to your discussion, and I'm thinking of the grant requirements, I'm thinking, wait a minute, does this, does this. Meet that requirement?
I think it would be part of flood mitigation somewhere, but we'd have to look at.
Yeah, we'd have to probably, you know, get an opinion on that for sure. So good, good, great discussion.
Yeah. I guess I'd be curious also, one of the other things we talked about, again, like, I, I think part of me kept thinking like. We were gonna try and use this money to help people who lost so much last year. And really, by definition, this has to be more forward-focused preventative kind of spending. Um, but just thinking like, if there, you know, we had this big. We wanted to have this big push also to get all the rentals like legit. Um, and just making sure that they're all above board, they're all registered. Um, and I don't know if there's anything along those. Lines to incentivize that. Again, that kinda really goes back to the owners, I guess, but.
Yeah, we, you were always running into, uh, that's a good point, Councilmember Chester, the, we're always running into somebody that. Uh, will find that his, doesn't know that there's a rental license required for, for instance, and. So then we work, work with them to get that done, so we can get the inspection done, um. So, yeah, I I hear what your question is, I'm not, or I hear the concern, I'm not sure. How we make it all fit.
Yeah, like, what's, what is the benefit that we could be coming up with for renters, and it's, it's hard to. Come up with. A clear.
Sorry, what did you say?
I'm just trying, it seems difficult for us to come up with a a benefit, of come up with some. Thing that we can, something tangible that we can offer to renters that makes sense with the. The param- the parameters of this funding, because it's not about helping make people whole that lost a lot last year, it's about. You know, forward and preventing flooding and flood damage, and and so that's harder for the renters. To come up with something. So much of that falls to the owner's responsibility.
Right, so my response would be if um, there are renters still in the same home. Um, knowing that what you can offer me is assistance with paying for my homeowner's insurance. And understanding what homeowner's insurance would cover, um, that would be a perfect incentive for me. Because I have nothing else, you know, I I, there's, I have no control over what the homeowner gets. You know, he's gonna get this benefit, but the only thing I have is, I'm moving forward. If now I know, light bulb, let me get some additional insurance. Um, I don't think that would be a hard sell. Uh, and of course, we're gonna investigate how we can ease that in there, but I think we can. I think it can be part of flood mitigation or, I think, can. Course, we gonna find out first. All right, cool. Such such a smart council, I love you guys. Um, creative, always thinking.
None of us want to go to jail.
Absolutely, absolutely, and we definitely don't want our town administrator and the mayor to go.
Well, maybe. Hillary and I don't want to go, right?
So the next item is our wifi, I think this'll be easy, right? We can get wifi somehow or another, I'm gonna let Mr. Barnes go ahead and take over this portion.
Yeah, I think this one is uh relatively easy, this is the broadband category of the grant and. Um, we can ensure with wifi connection at the rec center, at the, at the Veterans Park, at the. The two other parks where people can have a hotspot where they can actually get on wifi. Um, we can go out for proposals to accomplish that. We're, we're also going to look at bringing you a proposal. For the rec center to look at expanding it into more of a community center. Where it's open wifi cafe with uh uh classes and with um. Where it's open wifi cafe with uh, classes and with um, computers. And after school programs for the kids to get on their computers and all of that. As we, Avery and Rick and I work on that concept, but um, this, this one is pretty straightforward. In terms that we just don't have a budget number yet, um, and it qualifies obviously through the capital program with the grant. For whatever reason. Uh, the um, federal government determined, a- and I, I, I guess I get the connection because. If everyone has wifi, then they can get information about um, public health. And the vaccines and the testing and the, um, what's going, going on, as the school district made it. I believe, mayor, did they not give everybody a laptop?
Oh yes, everybody comes home with a laptop.
Yeah, and so that, that, that's similar concept, I'm sorry, uh, Councilmember.
But people also, I mean, enabling people to work from home, enabling the kids to do the remote learning. I, I also really liked the idea, I don't remember whose idea it was, of having. Like an outdoor kind of patio that's kind of covered with tables and things near, um, or like attached. To the rec center, so that in addition to wifi, there's actually a, a place where people can be outside. Using that wifi and really kind of setting up, I thought that was a really great idea, I don't know if we're, that's included here or if that's.
Yes, that's part of the, the wifi cafe concept that we're going to present to you, yeah, absolutely.
Yep, I thought wifi would be easy.
It'll be nice when we get our little walking.
Yes, it will.
I just got the engineering plan on that, so now I can move out to the next step. Um, on that trail, so.
So really, um, that's all that I have. And um, Mr. Barnes, if you want to review uh, the agenda for next month for me?
Yeah, the only thing on the agenda for next month, uh, I did send out the minutes, so if you have any uh, review and comments about them, please let uh, myself or Avery know. Um, the only item on the agenda for next Wednesday is the procedure to vacate the street. Uh, Fifty Second Avenue at the end of, um, end of it on, at Crittendon and um. Malia.
Yeah, the other.
Yeah, um, and um, the town attorney will uh, present that information on how we go about doing that vacation.
Awesome, I have a question, not pertaining to that, but pertaining to Amy's meter.
Yes, did they get it back in, I heard back from the WSSC Abalone and they said. Uh, unfortunately, of course, they didn't go during the weekend, but Monday morning she indicated that they would be there to um, do the meter.
Okay, I, I'll go check, walking by, I didn't see, everything was still snow covered.
Right.
So I didn't know whether it kind of got delayed because of the snow or whether they.
I mean, it could have, she, she just responded to me first thing Monday, you know, I, I sent the email as soon as you let me know that there was a problem. And the picture, and I didn't hear back from, of course, on the holiday. Uh, which I didn't think I would, but uh, she sent it right first thing Monday and said that they would uh, take care of it, so. I did not follow up with her today to see whether they did.
Alright, I'll, I'll check with Amy, I'll make sure tomorrow I'll.
Let me know.
That was a mess. Alrighty, thank you for that.
Alright, so if we don't have anything else, any comments or anything free that the council wants to provide? Or our town administrator? Or Ms. Avery? Um, I will provide that, um, I talked with our municipal liaison from the county execs office today. One of the things that we talked about, um, I know, I believe everyone is getting questions about COVID testing. You know, the sites and um, you know, kits and no kits available. Prince George's County has been stretched and stressed um, in that area, I'm sure other counties as well. So they're going to set up a Zoom call to talk about that. We, some may have also heard that the county has some funding for test kits. They're going to discuss that as well. And there are some. Groups or municipalities that may want to get together to purchase test kits. So I don't know if you've heard any of that, but um, one. So I talked to Ms. Ross, two, we're going to have a meeting. Three, if a municipality talks to you about purchasing a test kit, it's not out the window. But we'd like to see if we can get the free ones first in order to provide for our community. Um, because you know, the students may have to be tested more often, they're going to be family members ill, you know, everybody knows, it's, it's happening, it's here. It's almost the common cold, um, so unfortunately, tests are required, I just had a res- a um, employee. That texted me while we were meeting to say, do I need to get a COVID test before I return to work? Because she is out sick for the second day. So um, you know, the kits are going to be necessary, but I'd like to see if we can get them free first. But then I don't want us to lose the opportunity if um, we don't get them free, not to get on board with a group. That, I'm sorry, with a group that may be able, we may be able to go in on. And it seems like the test kits are from eighteen to twenty dollars thus far each, so.
Um, they were giving them out at the libraries.
Yeah, they were.
Um, but. I, I mean, right now, the Bladensburg library is demolished, um, and the Hyatt Spill one is not open and the temporary one is closed. So we don't actually have, um, I mean, the Mount Rainier library is really tiny and their supply was really small. And so Green Belt was like the closest, so I just say that, you know, as the county was thinking of ways to distribute them. We were at a bit of a disadvantage that they chose the library route, just because right now, two out of the three libraries. Close to us are totally out of commission and the one that's open is the teeniest.
Yeah, and I think that they also included some of the fire stations, I know the fire stations were doing the testing and they had some of the kits. Yeah, but everybody is exhausted with the kits, that's for sure, um, CVS, Walgreens. Walmart, Zippo, I, I found out by looking for test kit. That there are so many other test kits out there, they test, you can test your children or whomever for everything. Um, right there, I went to Walgreens, I saw test kits for all kinds of drugs and um, so on, I, I didn't know. And that's where I was supposed to find the COVID test kit, so that was a learning experience there. So um, just letting you know that um, we will uh, report back to you. Um, as far as if we should go in with some other municipalities, I know the Maryland Black Mayor's. Um, sent out an email saying we should probably, a few of us should go in together and purchase test kits. But I mentioned that we need to check out the free opportunity first, right?
Mayor, I, Mayor, I did hear back from our contact on that.
You did.
He does not have any information, he's not been able to connect with the state to get that, he suggested we do the Black Mayor's. Mayor can, he actually sent me back.
Yeah, and Ms. Ms. Ross didn't sound so hopeful about that, but said we were going to meet about it. So I don't want everybody to get the same information and then all of a sudden, there's this mad rush. So um, I could find out how much the bulk would be and um. Talk about a good count as to what we should get, I know uh, uh, Morningside is ordering five hundred and they already have. Some on hand. Do we need five hundred, probably not? Do we need three hundred? Maybe.
That's how many hot dogs we gave out.
Yep, 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 so um.
Did you all hear there is a new variant?
Wait a minute, but what do you guys think about that? The purchasing? I, I think it's, I think it's a necessity.
Yeah, I hate that we have to do it, but I think it's something that.
They have to do.
Yeah.
So are we buying the kits to give out to people that? That, our residents that would contact us to say, can we get a kit from you, are we buying the kits for us to use for our staff? I'm, I'm a little confused.
I would say both, what would you say? I would say both, our staff needs it, but I know that our residents will need it as well, do we say it's a free for all? Probably not.
I would, I would say, let's say we buy the kits from the one group and they cost us ten dollars a kit.
It does not.
Well, I'm just saying, if they cost ten dollars a kit, for our employees, it's, it's free. If a resident needs a kit, I think it should be charged whatever our cost is. With. The mayor and town administrator, Matt, yeah, 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 town administrator. Have the option that if it's a family that we know that the income isn't there, that we waive that. But if not, I, I, I can see people coming up here, because I see it with the free food. Just families that are coming up getting that, they don't need it.
What I could do is check with um, Morningside and the other communities that are doing it and see how they do it. Um, what their stipulations are, and maybe we can um, figure out where we want to stand with it.
Okay, because, because I, it irks me to see people that don't need. The food that's being given out and coming up and getting it, and then later on I see some of it on their front. Curve, free cans of food, because they didn't like what was being given out that day.
Okay.
But get back to, I don't know if anybody heard, but in France, there's now a new strand of the virus out. They got like twelve or thirteen people.
Yeah, they don't know what to call it, right?
It's something off the wall, something like Iona or. It's a weird name.
I heard they didn't know what to call it, it's another.
Maybe somebody was just being funny when they told me Iona, or you know.
No, that might be it.
Well. I was thinking when they said that, I own the virus, Iona.
You're always doing something to people, so they got you back.
That's right. I did hear there was, you know, it was from, in France, where they. Are we keeping you awake?
I know, I, I, I didn't know whether to, to take myself off and do it, or just go ahead and get it out the way.
Do we need to, Mayor and Council, uh, do we need to look again about closing Town Hall?
I, I don't know, because I, well, go ahead, I'll hear from the um, council.
I would say, yes, we need to look at it, because. The, the rates have gone up terrible. Um, and to me, if we did it for thirty days and then reevaluate at the next work session. But I, to me, I'd rather protect the ones that are in Town Hall right now, because how many cases have we had here lately?
In Town Hall? Yeah, several.
Several, so.
So the thing, the thing with that to me is, we are. Ms. Avery and um, Ms. Christiana are protected. If someone comes into the Town Hall. Um, if they follow the rule and not.
Protected to the point of not sharing. Personal property such as money or credit cards or uh, that kind of thing, as long as there's. I mean, I guess as long as there would be a process to handle those items. In a way that minimizes the exposure.
I think we need to look at um, doing that kind of thing, because we don't know. You know, the variants, um, the, the, uh, I, I think the, the people that are most exposed are our police department.
Yes.
Um, they're the most exposed, um, and affected. Um, our public works, they can um, separate. And kind of wa- work alone and um, we can put on restrictions such as, you know how the police. Um, when uh, initial Corona vi- virus was out. They didn't do certain stops, you know, or they did a stop, there was a distance that, you know, certain things were in place for them. When they communicated with someone that they stopped, and I think that we need to look at. We have to do certain things like that, because are we? Our, some of our employees. May not be able to work from home consistently, because we customer service and um, uh. Talking to our residents, seeing our residents is what we do, basically, there are some positions that, you know, you can work from home. But I think we need to learn how to, um, I'm not being doctor, but um, work with this. Is it gloves when you take a credit card? Uh, why not? We, the only, the major thing is to be careful when you're working around those you're comfortable with. I think that's the major thing, Ms. Avery has her office, Mr. Barnes, you have yours. Um, uh, Christiana, she, she pretty much has hers when she close, well, they do close that door. So um, I think being able to take care of uh, uh, someone that comes up with a question and come into those. We have windows to come in there, I think, I think that's, that's safe.
Hey, Mayor, Mayor.
Hello?
Mayor, if I may. If I may.
Oh, okay.
Uh huh, how are you folks, I trust you're having a good New Year so far. You know, listen, I just wanted to respond to the um, piece about uh, exposure. A lot of papers get passed back and forth through both windows. You know, we spoke about credit cards, but individuals who come in to either pay a citation or pick up a vehicle. Pass papers through the window, we pass papers back to them, and this happens three or four times for each person that comes in. And I think that either um, Ms. Gray and Ms. Nelson, they have their mask on, but if they're wearing gloves. And they change the gloves out on each time that they, you know, interact with one of our customers. And they put the paper in a file, so they're not handling the paper, because there's nothing for somebody to sneeze in their hand. And then take a piece of paper and slide it through the window, saying, I, you know, I want to pick up my um, recovered automobile. And so those are just some of the small things that we can do, I was talking to the captain uh, a few minutes ago. About maybe having mandatory mask in six feet at all times for all officers. Regardless of what they're doing, because a lot of them come in the back door and they're comfortable. Everybody has their uh, required shot, but they are sitting in the back interacting, and Mayor, you remember seeing me two days ago? I have my mask on the entire time I'm working, because you never know, the person doesn't have to be. Standing next to you for you to contract it, they could leave something that's there two hours before you got there. Going in and out of the bathroom is another opportunity, so I'm just saying, you know, sometime you gotta clean as you go. And PPE, mask, gloves and hand sanitizer has to be the order of the day. Until these numbers start to trend in the opposite direction.
I totally agree. That is absolutely, I agree.
And I can draft something in the morning and share it with the team. And we kind of massage it a little bit and see if it works for us, and like um, Ms. McCarley was saying earlier. We do something for a period of time, like say thirty days, and then we evaluate it to see if we need to do something different or. What we're doing is working. or what we're doing is working. Now, Mayor, you know, two of my officers are out because they tested positive recently and they cannot come back. And that's, are we secure on the call?
No.
No, it's open.
Okay, okay. Two of the employees tested positive, they're out. In order for them to come back, they have to bring a positive test. And so, you know, they've had some challenges. What'd you say, Ms. McCauley?
I said, how about they bring back a negative test, not a positive?
They have to bring back a test indicating that they are COVID free. Let me say it that way.
That's perfect, thank you.
Right, and so, you know, I was talking to one of them today around about twelve o'clock and he's been out long enough, but he's saying he can't find either a rapid test or another one. He said he could see one for next Friday, which would be the, I mean, yeah, which would be the fourteenth. And I said, no, no, we can do better than that. So he's looking again, he's going to call me in the morning. Hopefully, we can find a place where he can go to get tested. But he has to do that before he comes back. He indicated everybody at his house was positive. So, Mayor, I can talk to you about that offline later, so.
Can I make a comment here?
Okay, I just wanted to add that too.
Okay, can I make a comment here? I appreciate and certainly to go along with the use of gloves in dealing with the paper, deal with money transactions. But I'd like to offer maybe at this time period to decrease or eliminate for the moment using cash and that we require use of credit cards instead of cash transactions. It's less, money's gone through so many hands. That's of a exposure for Chrissy and I. And having folks use credit card is, is, it just limits some what that exposure. So I'd like to bring that up as a possibility. And I got cut off, so we may have discussed this, but I got cut off for some reason and just getting back in.
I agree that a lot of places have done that, Ms. Avery. Especially your pharmacies. Yep. So, some good ideas. But I just don't think we should shut it down. Our residents need us.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to have a discussion. I appreciate it, great discussion. I also have an employee out with COVID, so we have been a total of three in town hall.
All right, so thank you. And we'll just stay on top of it, you know? If things change, we'll stay on top of it. We all hear the news, so we know what's happening.
Can I make another suggestion? Perhaps we could get the building cleaned. We did it one time earlier on, about a year ago. I know the situation was different, but there have been so many cases of it that maybe it's time for the building to be cleaned again in that way to kind of, you know.
Does, when our cleaner comes, they don't do like the desks and things like that or how thorough?
They wipe it down, but they do not, I don't know that they use anything that specialized company use to actually disinfect.
So I'm not disputing what you're saying. When we spoke with the other company, I think American Pass, I think we talked about, they, their cleaning tactic was not as thorough as our weekly cleaning. Was it, Mr. Barnes? Do you remember when we talked about cleaning the rec center?
No, I think that the company we did use at town hall, they were ServiceMaster and they came in and literally cleaned every surface in the building.
Such as?
The desk, the doorknobs, the chairs, the, you know, anything that had any kind of surface to it.
So, so our regular cleaner doesn't do that?
Well, she does, as Avery indicates. She wipes down everything in the, in the building. But I don't know that she uses Clorox or disinfectant that would kill the virus. I know she uses, you know, cleaning materials.
So I say this because all of us did, a lot of companies, all of us did. When COVID first came out, we went through and we did a thorough cleaning of, or we said we were doing a thorough cleaning of our buildings. But then, as time went on, you saw, or I saw, that that thorough cleaning was the same cleaning that our weekly or daily cleaners do. And so I know it feels good for us to say, you know, we had a thorough cleaning of, of the office. But if I'm infected, when I come the next day, I have now polluted the office. You know, according to where I am. I just want us to think about realistically. Or is it something that we could get our current cleaner to do? Ask her what she's using. Most cleaners use a deodorizer. Some of it smells good, some of it smells like Clorox. You know, can we ask her to ensure that she's wiping down the door handles? You know, maybe she just rushes by the door handles. But let's ask her, can you just ensure that you wipe the door handles down? And do we need to possibly go with a daily cleaner? That might be a question. Do we need to as a town and employees? Do we, public works, do we need them to assist in ensuring that certain things are done? Maybe. But I just want us to look at, you know, we'll be paying a company to do something that we probably are already getting. Comments? Ms. Avery, I'm not tearing down what you said. I just want us to think about that, that part.
I agree, it doesn't matter to me where it comes from. But I think a more frequent type of cleaning to try to ensure a disinfectant type of cleaning as opposed to something that doesn't go as deep as maybe we need to at this time could be done. And it could be done in a variety of ways. And I'm sorry to obfuscate, but I'm just saying that since we had these cases, something more frequent, something more specific could be done to help us all out.
I'd like to also say that Chief made a good point that writing something up so that we can see it as employees, that this is, this is what we're going to follow now. You know, we're not going to be so lax with our mask. We're going to ensure that we, you know, use gloves whenever. We're, we're not going to accept cash anymore. We're going to do this or that. And then also, I'm talking to Jamina and asking if, you know, what's the product that you use? And can you wipe down the whatever? And we are very good at, we have PPE gear. We have good cleaning supplies. We have disinfectant wipes that everyone is given, correct? We have masks that are available. We have the thermometer, we might need another one, thermometers that are available, gloves. So we're good about it, we just have to do it. You know, because we're, we're family, you know, when we come to work. You just have to do certain things that might be different. I mean, yeah, not different, but be vigilant about it. Cool? Cool, everybody's cool. All right. So that's what we have. And we already know what's happening next Wednesday in our meeting. And so we, we can adjourn if no one else has anything. Ms. Avery, is that good for you?
Oh, yeah, that was fine. I just wanted to, I just wanted to address how we address it.
Okay, cool.
Whatever means that it's being addressed. There were, we know it's important to look into and to do something different than what we're doing now.
Yep, very good, very cool. All righty, well, we'll check out the kits and Chief Gibson will take care of writing something up for us. And.
Yes, ma'am.
We have that whole agenda of the flood mitigation information that we need to work on. So thank you, Council. Appreciate you. And motion to adjourn? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. All right. Oh, you had a question or was that a aye?
That was an aye, I didn't get my mute button off in time.
All right, cool, cool. So meeting adjourned.